Hey, you could just leave those on the, on the what time? Yeah.
Capo.
Okay, the organizational and regular business meeting of the Watertown Central School District Board of Education is called to order at 6:31 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and one minute's silence for the following retired staff members who recently passed away. Peter Gianglasco Jr. and Michael Slinski. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today in our first meeting of the Board of Education for the 2025-26 school year. Congratulations to incumbents Cheryl Miggins and Marie Johnson on their reelection and to newly-elected board member Corinne Montesano. Item 3.01 is the administration of the office of the elected board members. Mrs. Johnson, please stand and come forward. Please raise your right hand. You're gonna read from here.
I, Marie Johnson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board member of the Wapentown Central School District Board of Education for the term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028, according to the best of my ability.
Cheryl Miggins, please come forward.
I, Cheryl Miggins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board member of the Wapentown Central School District Board of Education for the term July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028, according to the best of my ability.
Corinne Montesano, please come forward.
I, Corinne Montesano, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the board member of the Wapentown Central School District Board of Education for the term of 7/12/2025 through 6/30/2028, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Item 1111, item 3.02, superintendent of the office, Dr. Bob. May I ask you to come forward to take your oath? Please raise your right hand.
I, Dr. Dwight Long, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools of the Wapentown Central School District for the 25-26 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4.01, election of the board president. I am now requesting nominations for the position of board president for the 25-26 school year. Do I have any nominations? Mr. McFarlane, would you wish to nominate? Yes, sounds very good. Is there a second?
No, no, no.
Okay, I need a second for Mr. McFarlane. Thank you, Mr. Morgan, seconded now. Any other nominations for the position of the president? Virgil?
I nominate trustfully Marie Johnson.
Is there a second for Marie Johnson? Cheryl Miggins, second minute. Okay, any other nominations for the office of president? Going once? Going twice? Okay, seeing none, nominations look like closed. Okay, so we have two nominations. Marie Johnson and Michael McFarlane. Please, all in favor, please raise your hand. For Michael McFarlane, for the office of president of the Board of Education. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. McFarlane? All in favor of Marie Johnson for the office of president of the Board of Education, please raise your hand. People, now please. Marie Johnson has been appointed president of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year. Ms. Johnson will now take the oath for the office.
I, Marie Johnson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Wapentown Central School District Board of Education for the year 2025-2026 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Marie. Now, Mr. President Johnson, you are now chair of the meeting and make conduct nominations for vice president of the Board of Education, which is item 4.2, and then. 4.02, vice president. Do we have any nominations for vice president? Mr. Morgan?
I nominate Cheryl Miggins.
Cheryl Miggins, do we have a second? Mr. Romeo? Do we have any others? Seeing none, all those in favor of Cheryl Miggins as vice president? Unanimous. Congratulations, Miggins, you are nominated. Cheryl, please come forward to take your oath of office.
I, Cheryl Miggins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Wapentown Central School District Board of Education for the 25-26 school year, according to the best of my ability.
One nomination for president? 5.01 is board member review and sign code of conduct. So if everyone can take a moment to read over your code of conduct in front of you. 6.01, appointment of officers for school year.
My apologies that I did not have Mr. Slowshower's booming announcer's voice. But resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the appointment of the following officers for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
So any questions? Motion? Mr. Morgan, second. Mr. Odoms, discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 6.02, approve appointments.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the following appointments for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Peggy Kellen, second. Mr. Romeo? All those in favor? Unanimous. 6.03, designation appointments.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the following designation appointments for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Mr. Coppellari, second. Ms. Kellen, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. 6.04, designation appointments, acting superintendent.
Resolved. Resolved, the Board of Education does hereby approve the designation appointments for acting superintendent for the 25-26 school year, as stated.
Motion? Peggy Kellen, second. Mr. Coppellari, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.05, designation to appoint impartial hearing officers?
Whereas Commissioner Regulation 200.5 directs the Board of Education to arrange for an impartial hearing officer in accordance with the Commissioner's rules and whereas the Commissioner's regulations require that the rotational process must be initiated immediately but no later than two business days after received by the school district the written request for the hearing and whereas the Commissioner's regulations allow the Board of Education to designate one or more of its members to appoint the impartial hearing officer once an available impartial hearing officer from the rotational list has been found to be available, now therefore be it resolved that the board president or vice president be designated as having the power to appoint an impartial hearing officer who has been selected in accordance with the regulations of the Commissioner of Education on behalf of the Board of Education.
Motion? Peggy Kellen, second. Mr. Coppellari, all those in favor? Unanimous. Designations official bank depository?
Resolved that the following banks and/or trust companies be and hereby are designated as the official depositories for the funds, as stated.
Motion? Peggy, second. Mr. McFarlane, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.07, designations official newspapers?
Resolved that the Board of Education designate the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Southern Dutchess News as the official newspapers of the Wapentown Central School District for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion? Mr. Odom, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.08, designation special education?
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the following special education designations for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Yeah, I know, but I have to get a second. Mr. Romeo, second, discussion? Mr. Romeo?
Somebody please tell me exactly what is the job of these individuals and secondly, how did they get chosen? I'm sorry? Yeah, part one. And what is their, actually, their function? And secondly, how did they get chosen? If it answers that, was this it?
It's.
I think it's.
Special education parent representative is what he's asking about, Mr. Z.
Yeah, so, um, parents, uh, for students who work with community in special education, if they'd like to, they can request a parent member. Usually it's a parent who has a child who's not in the classifying district and go to a classifying district. And usually they're, they're not an advocate, they're usually somebody that has been through the process, the process and the parent kind of understands what the process is about because it's a quite complicated process. And their parents who've contacted over the years, uh, once or twice to see if they want to be parent members. It doesn't come up too often. I can tell you, you know, in the course of the year, if we have one or two parents requesting parent members, that's a lot. So these people who've been through the system and agreed to be parent members when requested, like I said, it doesn't happen that often and that's usually, usually the role they play.
Can anybody apply for those who go to class? Is it open to the public? They are members of the public. Sorry. Yeah, they are members of the public. They're community members' parents.
Trustee Miggins?
Yes, Mr. Romeo. Prior to being elected to the board, I served as a parent representative for several years and, uh, the, uh, director of special education at the time called and asked me if I would be interested because I was someone who had a knowledge base from my own experience with my child after attending meetings for several years.
It's okay, I have no problem with it. I said, I want to be sure that it's open to the public. Obviously, they have a special education background, but it should be open to the public and, and obviously it is, so I have no problem.
Yes, yes, simple, I trust you, I trust.
Yes, sir. Does a parent team the right to request any other parent to come along and help represent them?
They do, they have a right to bring anybody to the meeting if they want to.
Okay.
All those in.
All those in favor? Unanimous. 6.09, authorizations?
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the following authorizations for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. Romeo, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.10, authorization of petty cash accounts?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the following petty cash accounts to be established for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Mr. Morgan, second. Mr. Coppellari, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.11, authorization for transfer of C8 funds by wire?
Resolved that the Wapentown Central School District be authorized to direct the state education department to transfer state aid funds by wire to the approved bank of record per annum.
Motion? Mr. Morgan, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.12, authorization to certify tax adjustments?
Whereas the Wapentown Central School District is a tax levying body authorized to correct errors on the tax rolls pursuant to Real Property Tax Law 554 and whereas the Wapentown Central School District wishes to delegate to an official responsibility of certifying payment due for the correction of errors on the tax rule, now therefore be it resolved, one, that the Wapentown Central School District delegate to the internal claims auditor the authority to examine applications for the correction of errors on the tax rolls and to approve or reject such applications for the correction of errors on the tax rolls which are levied upon by the Board of Education under Section 554 of the Real Property Tax Law but only to the extent that such correction of errors is no greater than $2,500. Two, that this delegation of authority shall be effective only for the calendar year in which the school tax rolls are being levied.
Motion? Mr. McFarlane, second. Mr. Coppellari, all those in favor?
Oh, do you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Romeo.
What happens if, uh, the error is more than $2,500?
Then it's more of a. When the error, when the error is more than $2,500, that's when it looks to be a tertiary, the tax tertiary.
Could you go speak at the mic, please, so the public can hear? Especially for the. Thank you.
When the claim is more than $2,500, it is no longer considered to be a small claim. It would be looked at as a tax tertiary.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous. 6.13, approval to renew PMA self-funded workers' compensation?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby renew PMA to continue to represent the district as a third-party administrator for the 2025-2026 school year as detailed in a memo dated June 17th, 2025 from the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Business Development to the Superintendent of Schools.
Motion? Mr. Morgan, second. Mr. McFarlane, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. 6.14, continued participation in class?
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby approve the district's continued participation in the Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System class pursuant to Article 5-6, Section 119-0 of the General and Enormous Code Law, as hereby defined.
Motion? Mr. Morgan, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.15, notification of BOSI's bid participation?
Resolved that the Wapentown Central School District shall participate in any BOSI's bid and BOSI's cooperative consortium that are in the best interest of the district during the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion? Mr. Romeo, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor? Unanimous. 6.16, approval of 403B plan administrator?
Resolved, the Board of Education renew Omni Group as the third-party administrator for our 403B plan for employees at a cost of $3,012 as detailed in a memo dated June 17th, 2025 from the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Business Development to the Superintendent of Schools.
Motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. McFarlane, all those in favor? Unanimous. 7.01, adoption of board president powers?
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby adopt board president powers, as stated.
Motion? Mr. Romeo, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor? Unanimous. 7.02, re-adoption of district policies?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby re-adopt all existing 2024-2025 board policies for continuation during the 2025-2026 school year unless revised or retired by action of the Board of Education.
Motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. McFarlane, all those in favor? Unanimous. Adoption of the Board of Education meeting calendar?
Resolved, the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District does hereby adopt the 2025-2026 Board of Education meeting calendar, as stated.
Motion? Mr. Odom, second. Ms. Kellen, all those in favor?
Virgil?
Unanimous. 7.04, acceptance of cellphone inventory?
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentown Central School District hereby accepts the inventory of cellphones for the 2025-2026 school year, as stated.
Motion? Ms. Kellen, second. Mr. Coppellari, all those in favor?
Trustee.
Oh, Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that we've got a full inventory of, of cellphones and how they're distributed. Are there any other inventories that the, that the board will, um, will be applicable on where that will be presented to the board?
I know that, uh, there was discussions amongst the audit committee about several audits on equipment and other stuff and I, I would hope that we can move forward with that because if you can make some suggestions, we can.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Unanimous. 7.05, approval of average hourly overtime rate for custodians and groundkeepers for facilities usage?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following hourly overtime rates for custodians and groundskeeper to be reflected in Policy 1500-E2, overtime rates for custodians and groundkeeper to be reflected in. for custodians and groundkeeper to be reflected in Building Usage and Fee Schedule as stated.
Custodians. Okay, yeah. Motion. Ms. Kellum, second, Mr. McFarland, all those in favor? Unanimous. 8.01 Membership Duchess County School Boards Association. Ms. Kellum, I, would you be interested in serving on that committee again for us? Thank you.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby elect to join the Duchess County School Boards Association for the 2025-2026 school year for an annual dues amount of $895, no increase from previous years, or for the previous six years. Be further resolved that Peggy Kellum be designated as the Waukesha Central School District DCSBA Director on the Association's Board of Directors for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion. Mr. McFarland, second, Ms. Kellum, any questions? All in favor? And, uh,
A member?
All yes except for Mr. Capolari. 8.02 Membership New York State School Boards Association.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the membership of the New York State School Boards Association for the 2025-2026 school year at a cost of $13,534.
Motion. Mr. Lumia, second, Ms. Kellum, any questions? All those in favor? Mr. McFarland, Mr. Lumia, Ms. Kellum, Ms. Miggitts, Mr. Odoms, Ms. Montesando, Mr. Morgan, knows? Mr. Capolari? 8.03 Appointment of NISBA Advocacy Liaison. Do we have somebody that wants to do the liaison for NISBA advocacy? Ms. Kellum? And do we have a second person that will sit as an alternative?
Greggy Montesano, Greggy, Corinne Montesano.
Corinne Montesano, thank you.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Trustee Peggy Kellum to serve as the NISBA Advocacy Liaison and Trustee Corinne Montesano to serve as the alternate NISBA Advocacy Liaison for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion. Motion. Mr. McFarland, second. Ms. Miggitts, uh, Trustee Miggitts, sorry. All those in favor? Unanimous. NISBA Pro Docs Pro, Board Docs, uh, Board Docs Pro, sorry.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the NISBA Board Docs Pro at the member rate of $9,000 or non-member rate of $12,000 effective August 1st, 2025 to July 31st, 2026.
Motion. Mr. McFarland, second, Ms. Kellum, all those in favor? Mr. McFarland, Mr. Lumia, Ms. Kellum, Trustee Miggitts, Trustee Montesando, Odoms, and Morgan, opposed? Mr. Capolari? 8.05 NISBA Policies Updated Service.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the NISBA Policy Updated Service Annual Subscription Agreement at the member rate of $900 or non-member rate of $1,800 effective August 1st, 2025 to July 31st, 2026.
Motion. Ms. Kellum, second, Mr. McFarland, all those in favor?
Mr. McFarland.
Mr. Lumia, Ms. Kellum, Ms. Miggitts, Mr. Odoms, Ms. Montesando, Mr. Morgan, opposed? Mr. Capolari? 8.06 Designate Board Members to Serve on Standing Committees. So there's some committees that a lot of people signed up for, some committees that only won or nobody signed up for. So for Audit Committee, Mr. Morgan signed up for that, and I'd like to have Mr. Morgan, Mr. Capolari if he's willing, and Mr. Odoms if you're willing to serve on that committee?
Yes.
Yes, no? Okay. Do I have somebody else that's willing to serve, Mr. Lumia? And I'm going to put Mr. Morgan as the chairperson.
Okay, so, President Johnson, it's going to be Trustee Morgan, myself, and who?
Mr. Lumia.
Mr. Lumia, all right, thank you.
Yes, for, for audit, I have three.
Okay, there's seven.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not listing myself as executive, because I am on all committees as executive. District-wide School Safety Team, I had Mr. Capolari and Mr. McFarland that both signed up for that, so they will be on there. And I need a third person, uh, Mr. Lumia, could you do that? Mr. Lumia. Wellness is Mr. McFarland, and then I need two others for us. Mr. Lumia.
Even though it's eight o'clock in the morning, you know?
It is.
Christian, you have to change that time.
I need one more person. Ms. Kellum will also. Thank you, Peggy, thank you, John.
He reached the door, so I can get a couple.
On the Capital Improvement Committee, there was quite a few of us that wanted on that committee. It's going to stir it up a little bit, I've got, uh, Trustee Miggitts as the chairperson, Ms. Kellum, and Ms. Montesando. On the Curriculum Committee, Mr. Lumia signed up. Because Ms. Montesando's been going for a solid year, and I wanted, it was one of her few choices, and Ms. Kellum also.
I understand that, but I think we need somebody who's extremely knowledgeable about those systems, and I feel like
Who did you elect so far?
I put Cheryl Miggitts, who was on the committee for several years when we did the first AC system, Ms. Kellum, who's been on the, on that committee several times, and Ms. Montesando, who's been attending the meetings solidly for the last year as a community member.
Negotiate it out. Negotiate. We talk about
Presidential appointment, that's
Yeah.
That's her, that's her role.
Would it be okay? You want to give? That's what my name is, Andy.
There were six people that signed up for it. Only three need go on.
I know, I'm just saying, this is the time to talk about it. I'd rather talk about it now than after it's too late.
So I know There was quite a few of us that signed up for it.
The reason why I would raise it, Mr. McFarland's extremely knowledgeable about those systems.
Yes.
My opinion, it should be on, but it's your choice, I mean, you're the president.
We're probably not touching that system until next year. This is going to be a different part of the project that we're looking at right now. On Curriculum Committee, Mr. Lumia was the only one that signed up. Curriculum is face-to-face, it is four times a year, about four o'clock in the afternoon, and that is in district office. In district office. You'll take that? Okay, so Peggy Kellum and Virgil Capolari.
Thank you.
Personnel, I'm putting Mr. Capolari, Mr. Morgan, and Ms. Miggitts on that one. On Policy, I'm going to have Trustee Kellum as the chair, Trustee Miggitts, and Mr. Lumia. If you're okay with that, I believe you put down for that as well, Mr. Lumia. Strategic Planning, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Odoms, and Mr. Capolari. School Counseling is Corinne Montesando, Keith Odoms, and Mr. McFarland, if you could, it's a Zoom one, so it's pretty much whenever, if you're able to do that one. It's like two times a year. Okay. And Board Goals, because three members are not eligible, Ms. Kellum, Mr. Lumia, and Mr. Odoms, oh wait, that's ad hoc, sorry, unless I had to look at it. 6.0, or 8.07 Approved to Establish a Designated Board Member to Serve on Ad-Hoc Board Committees. We're getting to that one, sorry, that's ad hoc. 8.07 Establishment and Designated Board Members to Serve on Ad-Hoc Board Committees. The Board must first decide, okay, so we're going to decide the legislative action, I would like to not fill up right now, no one signed up for it. If we have a need arise, we can always warn the committee throughout the year and appoint those if an issue comes up that we want to go forward. Is everybody okay with that?
I would need that we establish a board goals.
Oh, yeah, that's nice. For the Board Goals Committee, I'd like to establish that, everybody is good with that? I would like to put Mr. Morgan, Capolari, and Ms. Miggitts. Ms. Kellum, Mr. Lumia, and Mr. Odoms are not eligible to sit on that committee as they're up for reelection.
Please read the motion to establish the committee.
Under recommended action.
Yeah.
Third line down.
Thank you.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Waukesha Central School District does hereby establish the Board Goals Subcommittee as a Board Ad-Hoc Committee for the 2025-2026 school year.
Mr. Morgan, second. Mr. Lumia. And then for that, I have Mr. Morgan, Mr. Capolari, and Ms. Miggitts. And Mr. Capolari will serve as chairperson. Do I have yeses? All those in favor?
Is that a
Mr. Lumia?
Yes.
Shared credit.
8.0
Now we're at 8.07. Unanimous. 8.08 Appoint Board Member Liaison for Local Municipalities Meetings. Do I have volunteers for that? Mr. Capolari?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Trustee Virgil Capolari to serve as the Board Representative at the Superintendent's Local Municipalities Meetings for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion. Mr. Lumia, second, Mr. Odoms, all those in favor? Unanimous. 8.09 Approved to Accept Letters of Interest to Serve on Committees.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the district clerk to begin accepting letters of interest from community members for consideration by the below-listed committees. Letters must include name, contact information, and any specific qualifications and/or expertise that would serve the work of the committee in accordance with their applicable charter. Letters will be accepted through October 6th, 2025, thereby affording potential members with the opportunity to learn of the available committee openings and to learn more about the committees themselves.
Motion. Mr. McFarland, second, Ms. Kellum, all those in favor, discussion.
I just would like to, to make the point that the committees that the Board of Education will solicit community members to participate on in are the Audit Committee, uh, and PS, the, the senior member of that committee that's served on it in August is actually a community member, Christine Silva, who's got accounting experience and is invaluable to the committee, um, and we would welcome an additional community member. The Capital Improvement Committee, which we just heard, uh, now Trustee Montesando has served on as a community member, the District-wide School Safety Committee, and the Wellness Committee. Uh, this is an opportunity for people to, to get involved, um, and step up, and I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Capolari?
If I may dovetail on those comments, as many of us sitting here have served on committees prior to coming on, it's a great way to kind of learn about, uh, how a lot of these decisions are reached, what's really happening, it's a great way to kind of, uh, get more than just your feet wet, but really have an active role in kind of helping shape things and ask questions and bring some of the value, expertise that, uh, uh, we would certainly welcome. Hello?
Any other comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. 9.01 Start a Regular Business Meeting. 10.01 Proposed Executive Session Pending Board Report.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing specific particular student-related matters. The Board also plans to discuss matters leading to the discipline of particular staff members. The Board plans to seek the advice of legal counsel, which is protected by attorney-client privilege.
Motion. Ms. Kellum, second, Mr. Lumia, all those in favor? Unanimous. We'll be back in about an hour, thank you.